Okay, I call the meeting to order. Looks like we got a full house. Thank you everything for attending. Would you have a consent agenda? Treasurers' report approved of minutes made June 4th and approve payment of bills. If you can have the treasurer's report, please.
June 9th, 2024 treasurer's report. There is $356,027.56 in payable checks. Eight of those payable checks are to major vendors for the amount of, well, that's not right, of $248,670.87. Payroll for July 5th, 2024, to include social security and Medicare, $160,486.09. There are two monthly bond payments totaling $48,554.92. Grand total payable checks, payroll, bond payments, $565,068.57.
Get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
James makes the motion. Walter seconds.
Yes, sir.
Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Would that want to recognize Judge Tanner?
Did I borrow his name again?
He lost weight. He lost weight and recognized.
He looks small without a robe.
Can you come up here and kind of like?
I'll let you go first. Yeah. Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be with you. Honorable body, no doubt about that. I've given quite a few of these over the years, but this one's really special to me. Judge Tanner, you remember I was the municipal prosecutor 11, 12 years ago, appeared before you for a while in court, and we were together out on post at the JAG office. And the thing that struck me was how many people admire and respect you around this county for your service as judge, your service in the military, to the army as a DA civilian, as a police officer in St. Robert, and some of the stories, I've noticed, there's good stories from back then. You just had an amazing career, you're a remarkable person, and I've had tremendous respect for you the entire time. And it's kind of bittersweet because I can't, it's hard to imagine St. Robert Municipal Court without Judge Tanner presiding. That's a tough thing for me to think about. But I just want to present this resolution for the House, congratulate you on your retirement, and to say on behalf of the state of Missouri, congratulations on job well done, and to have all the respect in the world for you. Hope you do well. Okay. Then we got one from the city here. We got a little bit of piece of your bench, I guess. Okay. Appreciate everything you've done. You've been, the last 10 years you've been judge, but I've been mayor, so I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Well, we're going to take a five-minute break and have cakes, have cakes and punch and even visit with Judge Tanner for a little bit if you'd like.
Thank you for your many years of service. Appreciate your time.
Got some cake over there. You've got to be the first through the line. Okay, thank you all for coming, Judge. Thank you. You guys don't have to stay for the council meeting. Thank you very much.
Curtis, we're going to introduce the judge person. We're going to introduce the new judge.
Okay. And Tice, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce you all to Phil Hudson. I know Phil Hudson. He's the Waynesville City Judge, and we're going to be a couple of months away from making moving Art Ward over to Associate Circuit Court, which you've already voted for, but it's going to take that time. The statute says it takes six months unless the cert, the chief judge of the circuit authorizes an earlier time. The chief judge has said indicated we probably do that, I think, but it's still going to take us a couple of months to get through all of the red tape. So, Bill is going to act as our judge for that time period until we can move to Associate Circuit Court, and I'd like to thank him for doing that. He'll do it the same way just that Bucky did, and he's Associate, he's the municipal judge in Waynesville, so he can work here too. So, we'll just pick up the docket and hurry, and I'll start prosecuting them. And I just wanted to meet Judge Hudson, so you know what you're looking at.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Lordson. And you don't have to stay any longer.
All right. Eric Lordson, thank you. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Okay, Curtis.
Okay, so we've got the 2024 Dodge Durango's outfitted, and I thought maybe you guys would like to come see this new awesome police vehicle. Very spacious, by far has the most license we've ever had on one, but I've got it set up to where we can go out front real quick now that it's stopped raining, and we don't have to go way back to the bays, and I will have him pull up while we're going out here, if you don't mind.
Hold the meeting back and order posted bond. Okay, first thing, got a resolution of the city of St. Robert on some grievance procedures. Anita, you want to tell them about these first things?
Yes, we received a community development block grant to help us with the wastewater treatment plant, and to do that, we had to have these two procedures updated. They were last done in 2002, so.
Need to be updated, huh? Okay, read this bill.
We don't read those.
Don't read them, resolution?
Sometimes you just read it out bravado, but I think you can just vote them.
Okay, well, I think what you have to do is somebody read the resolved, somebody move it, somebody second.
Okay, let me find it. Is that the 88? Yeah, you going to ask this question?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Tice, or Anita or Tice. I noticed something in there. It was on page 36, line 6 or 7, that said something about the county and the county commissioner has to be involved with any particular complaints that take place. Is that because the water treatment plant is in the county? Is that why we have to involve them?
Well, that should have been crossed out. I see line 5 that's on there.
Yes, I knew it was one of the lines.
Just line through it then.
Yeah.
And initial it.
We'll correct it tomorrow.
And then number 6 says presiding commissioner. That's the one you just heard us. So, at the end of, at the end of paragraph 6. No, the water treatment.
These were four.
Okay, so a resolution of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, adapting an internal grievance procedure for the prompt inadmissible resolution of ADA complaints. Get a motion. Glenn makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, and then we got one other one, a resolution of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, adopting a policy regarding non-discriminating on the basis of disability. Get a motion?
I'll make it.
James makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, and then we got one other one, a resolution of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, adopting a policy regarding nondiscriminating on the basis of disability. Get a motion?
I'll make it.
James makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, and then we got one other one, a resolution of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, adopting a policy regarding nondiscriminating on the basis of disability. Get a motion?
I'll make it.
James makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, and then we got a new charge customer at the transfer station that we reached out as a bill for.
Bill number 24-060, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for monthly payment on account at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the first reading? Glenn makes a motion?
Is this a new count?
Yeah, it's a new count.
Motion, please.
Reggie makes a second. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4069, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for monthly payment on account at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Glenn makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, we got another one, amending the ordinance number 3435. This is to extend the Bank of Missouri account until we get it closed down. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 24-061, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435, extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of the Special Obligation Bond Series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, and adjusting the interest rate thereon, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Second reading, please.
Bill number 24-061, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435, extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of the Special Obligation Bond Series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, and adjusting the interest rate thereon, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Get a motion on the second motion. Reggie makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And FEMA has packaged this project and gone through it and passed it on to FEMA two weeks ago, so it's in the FEMA lineup to get paid.
Yeah, they're getting closed down. Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4070, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3435, extending the maturity date of the not to exceed 22 million principal amount of Special Obligation Bond Series 2019 of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, and adjusting the interest rate thereon, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay. Is the ordinance raising the prices for the transfer station? Tice, you want to tell them about the transfer station?
Yes, the mayor asked me to do some work on this with Richard. We haven't raised our current rate, which is 52.50 per ton, 12 and 1/2 for a minimum amount of two, which is our minimum amount for anything up to 400 pounds. City of Rawa and Bitterwell is doing is 61, I believe. It's over 60, and 11 and 65 per ton. So, we're not going to be beating off somebody going someplace else. We haven't raised it for five years.
Oh, look, and it hasn't risen in the 10 years I've been there.
It's 52.50. And we have a secondary issue, which after I deal with this, I'm going to have to deal with, is that the Canadian company that bought Waste Corp. out, the owner of Blacko, where we do our disposal, there's a provision in there, they're supposed to bring us so many tons a month, and they have closed their Rawa office and are not bringing in that tonnage. And that contract runs with the land, Blacko, so they're bound by that contract. So, we're going to raise it, and then we're going to have to renegotiate what we're doing with them. For your information, we're averaging about 202 tons a month, a day. We're open about 24 or 25 days a month. The $5 raise will mean between 250 and 275,000 dollars in gross income to us.
For the year.
On that transfer station. I'm looking at it now, I think we're upside down. I think we're losing money on the transfer station. It's hard to figure because of the Waynesville contract, and we're picking up our own. But this will put us in the black again, for sure. We're still way under everybody else, so, and the minimum one occupies about less than 25% of our tonnage. The people bringing in their stuff from the yard or whatever, that tonnage is under 25%, probably under 20%. We're just raising that to $15 for up to 400 pounds. So, we're raising that from 12 and 1/2 to 15, and we're raising it, of course, you have to prove it, from 52.5 to 57.5. In the last, since we last raised it, understand that the minimum wage has been gone up about $4 per hour, and we're not paying minimum wage. And so, to catch up, we've got to do this, and then I'll start renegotiating with Blacko. But I believe our breakeven point per ton right now is about anywhere from 55.50 to, I'll say 54.75 to 54.50, 55.50. So, we should be in the black at this point. So, that's why we're doing it. Okay, send out your question.
Okay, read that as a bill.
Bill number 24-062, an ordinance raising the prices to be charged at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the first reading?
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Real quick, Tice and the mayor, is that a solid price that is going to?
Is what?
That price that we just negotiated, is there a way to reconsider maybe an extra dollar so that we still stay competitive, but puts us in the black a little bit more? Or is that just a solid price that we just agree upon? I guess what I'm asking is, is that price that we, that you told us that we're going to go up to $5, can we still go up an additional dollar and still stay competitive? I mean, do we have to stay at this, this $5 raise? Can we go up to $6?
No, we can do this, and then we can come back next month and do it again if we don't, if we need it. We've got other contracts. We've got post contracts and all these other people that have set things for a year and stuff like that that impact us.
This is for the regular tonnage.
Right.
We can't change what we got with the post, and I'm going to have to renegotiate with Blacko. And I'm sure everybody would now got a contract on where they can charge at the transfer station. We're going to have to get out to them and tell them we're raising rates.
Yeah.
We've got some contracts and some charging out there, but I think, I estimate we're losing at the present time anywhere from 125 to 185 per ton.
We lost 200,000 last year.
That's about right. I think we're losing over $1.50 a ton now at that price of the charge.
And this is regular tonnage we're talking about, right? Not the contract tonnage?
Yes.
So, then, like I said, though, we can still come back to the table and think about a raise, a more of a raise on the regular tonnage?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had no choice.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, to me then. Sorry.
Glenn?
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, just need swing for it. Would you, the challenge is on Friday, and the update is 24 hours.
I'm tracking. I was just looking for the number four on the thing, and I didn't see it, so I must have overlooked it. I'm good. Thank you.
Second reading?
Bill number 24-062, an ordinance raising the prices to be charged at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion.
Yes.
Glenn, a second. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4071, an ordinance raising the prices to be charged at the St. Robert Transfer Station.
Okay, get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Mike makes a motion. James, seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Okay, comments by all of them, and then start with Glenn? I'll hold mine for now, sir.
Okay, Susan, any comments?
I'll hold mine for now.
Linda?
Oh, they've been doing a good job at the dog park. Still, a few things need to be added, but I talked to him already about it.
Okay. Reggie?
Nothing.
Walter?
Nothing at this time.
James?
Uh, nothing.
Mike?
I just want to thank Public Works for doing that street light on both of, it added some extra visibility up there.
Did we ever get the ones on by the, that street that goes down to the hotel in the back? Remember, we had that guy complain, and we ordered them?
No, we looked at it. I don't think they'll fit.
They're what?
I don't think they'll fit in there as far as utilities.
Can we get some that fit in there?
I think, I'll probably have to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, next to that gas in a long place, fuel bar space.
Carbon left out in there.
Yeah.
I think because of the utilities that was in there, we couldn't actually give them to fit in the right spot.
Move them in.
I think we was looking at sidewalk too, standing the sidewalk out.
I'm not worried about that right now, I'm just trying to get lights on. Okay?
They wouldn't hardly fit with the sidewalk.
Don't worry about the sidewalks.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mean, we can put signs up on roads that flash the speed limit?
No, I'm talking about streetlights.
Oh, I thought you said a speed light.
No, street light.
Oh. Okay, I thought you said thanks for putting the speed light, and I was going to say maybe one of those.
Just put some lights up down there, stay. Figure out how to get in.
Send them all. Honey said speed light.
I do have a comment or so. Late in front of me, the committee meetings document, that's a result of all the discussions we had a month or a month and a half ago, if something needs to be adjusted or whatever, just talk with me or whatever. We just find consensus, adjust this as we go. We were just trying to standardize some things because of confusion and questions that can cause problems. That's all that's happening.
Okay.
And I just want to give you an update on pro temp activities that I've been involved in for the, since the last council meeting. The first one was June 12th, the chamber luncheon, we updated the community on the city happenings. I attended the annual motorcycle club USO ride event on June 15th. They donated $3,400 to the USO. And this is just something the city does. My wife and I, along with James and Walter, represented the city at the NAACP event celebrating Juneteenth at the community center. That was a formal event with several guest speakers, and the theme this year was roots to renew. I went to the first engineer brigade change of command on January 28th, and then finally attended the committee of 50 luncheon on June 28th, where we gave Sergeant Beaver the goodie bag from the city, including the mayor's column. And that's it?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, comments by administration. Finance, Frederica?
We, that's 1.6. Our gas bill just came out today, and it was about 50,000 there. We are actively seeking a bookkeeper. We interviewed a couple this right before, we interviewed one right before 4th of July and one yesterday, and we're still looking. And that's what we have for now. We're in the process of getting everything switched over from one bank to another.
Okay. Dana?
Well, we've made a couple hires for the transfer station. One gentleman started today, and the other one is scheduled to start in two weeks. I'm sorry.
I didn't hear you.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Transfer station hires to a?
Oh, transfers. They need two.
Two hires. Okay. Good. Very good.
Curtis is not here.
Can't afford to pay him though.
Steve?
A few things here. This street department had a bad service line that was underneath Charleston Way, that's back over behind Mary's County Bank. So, we ended up having to replace about 70 foot of that underneath. It was right in a cul-de-sac, so it made it a pretty long run. So, we got that repaired, and it actually was a bad spot where it was taking orders, so we did get some eye on it, resulted in that. Street department was, had been doing some road repairs on Lynn Lane, and I think a little stretch down here on East Lawn that was coming apart. Electric Department responded to theft of utilities that caused damage to the meter base and the meter, so we got that, I guess, shut off and removed to where they can't turn it off.
They have anything for that?
We turned everything in to the police department. I'm sure, I don't know if they, I think they might have done a police report on it. I don't know.
We can't turn it into insurance, or?
I mean, it was, it was above a amount that you could prosecute for, but I don't know that it wasn't above the deductible for us. The paving on April Drive is complete, so that's, that's all done. We're waiting for them to come back and do the striping on the intersection there, so hopefully they'll get that done before school starts, because they really need that during school hours. We did have a water main break on old Route 66 that was on the second. Found that one, I guess it had been running for a little bit, nobody had actually seen it, so that was pretty good find. The grass was really tall, so it was hard to, hard to find. I think somebody started mowing down there. I don't know if it was Charles or who it was, but I'm across it, so. We had one of our small F-550 dump trucks, we was actually taking some equipment to St. James to get it repaired, and on the way there, it actually broke down on the interstate, and it, somehow the, the starting system stayed engaged, turned the starter up, but then the motor is locked up, so the motor will not turn. We do, we did take it over to Ford today, so they're going to dive into it and see if they can actually tell what happened. It was doing some weird stuff with regeneration with the dead fluid, so we don't know if the computer told it to do something wrong, and it dumped a cylinder full of fluid and hydrolocked it, or what. That's what we're hoping for. It was one of our older, older F-550s, so. And then, other than that, the scissor lift that we use to, to do a lot of repairs in here, it's down, so we'll have to get it to Springfield to get it repaired sometime.
Okay. Mike, please. John?
Do a dozen of our works.
Thank you. Ricky?
I want to start with May's, the ton report's been a while. So, May's tonnage report was 4,575.75 tons, and the average was 206 for the month of May. The month of June was 4,132 tons, and an average of 217 for the month. The month of June was, uh, four thousand one hundred and thirty-two tons and an average of two seventeen for the month.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations on your two hires.
Yeah.
Does Jeremy work?
Congratulations.
What's wrong with Reggie?
Oh, for Steve? Steve, you got a question?
Oh, I'm down.
I called, I called at least two months ago about those trailers at the end of Platter, and nothing's been done yet, so I called back again the other day and she said that he, that, that woman told him that she's trying to get them moved out. Have you heard anything?
I know Jeremy's been working with them, uh, trying to get something done with those, uh, they're, they're.
I mean, it's just falling apart as it's sitting there.
If it's November or December, is it dropped in the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been checking that too, Jeremy had been looking at, he'd been into it.
Okay, Charles?
So, on June twenty-seventh, uh, that company made their, uh, repairs on the pool. So, I started filling up the pool, it took about two days, but never really filled up, and then so I realized something else was going on with it. Uh, it drained completely in two days, which was faster than the, when I went to fill up in May, so that was very disconcerting. So, I called that company back and I told them what was happening, uh, they came out yesterday. Uh, I gave you some pictures, that first picture is they did a dye test, they needed water in the pool, so that's just, uh, a leak around the floor return. Uh, it's not actual plumbing issue, he told me, uh, it was more of a concrete issue, so that's what that first picture is. Uh, second picture is a crack on the pool wall, he said that that is going to be an issue, uh, but that didn't cause our pool to drain this time. Uh, the third picture is the repair that they made on the pipe underneath the slides, and the fourth picture is the final, uh, completed repair, but there's still something going on with the pool. Uh, he came out yesterday, did that dye test, he put a listing device in the water, uh, and found a couple more cracks in the pool floor, but then it started to rain on him, so then he couldn't continue that test and he, he was going to come out today, but it rained today also to finish the, uh, the hearing detection. Uh, he's gonna come back out tomorrow, there's some other stuff, uh, that I'm going to try to troubleshoot. Our pool has nine hydrostatic, like, valves on the pool floor. Uh, he said that one, he thought was bad, uh, but I called, uh, Vaughn Pool and Spas in Rolla, and I ordered, uh, nine new ones, I'm gonna replace all of them. Uh, what that hydrostatic valve does underneath the pool, if it builds up enough pressure, it'll, you know, they pop up and relieve that pressure into the pool, but if debris gets in that hydrostatic valve, it'll keep it open, I don't know if that makes sense, and it'll drain the pool that way. So, that could be something I, I'm gonna replace all those and then I'm just gonna try my best to get it up and running when I can.
Does it look, does it look like at some point we're just going to have to have the outer walls re, redone?
Uh, probably, that's why I took that picture, the second picture of that wall.
I mean, is it just right there in that spot or is it all the rest?
There's a cou- there's a cou- there's a couple, uh, that spot is probably maybe, you know, five or six feet wide, but there's other spots that have cracks in them, uh, he said that it would be an issue down the road.
And this one, this is on the floor of the.
That's on, that's on the pool floor, uh, that's a floor return.
But we had the floor redone last year, didn't we, didn't we have them come in and?
It wasn't last year, it was before, you know, I took over the.
Year before last?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I doubt, I'm not sure.
That, that doesn't seem like it should have cracked already.
We had the walls redone and they took the semen out of the cracks and filled it with some clear stuff and cemented over it, and I think that's one picture where it shows the crack in the wall, that's, you can see it's got the cock in it still if you go over and look at it.
What I'm thinking is, though, the people that did our floor a couple of years ago, is there any warranty on it, can we call them and see?
I can, I can look into it, uh, and before I took over the, I can look into it.
I think we need to check all our warranties from the time we go to the pool, because they should have a bunch of extended old warranties in there.
Yeah, well, I know that they just did the floor, and that seems to me like if they just did the floor a couple of years ago, I know it hadn't been more than two years,
that that should be something that they would have fixed. Every year we spend fifty, hundred, thousand dollars on repairs.
It's a service to the community.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Charles.
I have something else too. I'm Linda.
Got another question?
I don't remember what Anita told me, but I sent, I sent a picture of, well, you know where they took the fence down, Steve? There's still metal sticking up from the fence poles and the dog park.
No, we, uh, we dug that, we dug that up.
Did you get that then?
Yeah, we filled it in, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, Celia? Go ahead, Lynn.
So, real quick, Charles, if you could please, could you define to all of us, especially me, the area of responsibility for parks and reps? When I, when I ask that, I mean, picking up trash, police calling, mowing, weed whacking, the whole nine yards. What is your area responsibility?
I mean, you have to break it down a little bit more, as far as mowing, uh, we mow the main, the main park and, or the ball field and around the community center and the pool, but then the street department picks up and they mow, uh, Boza Park, Platter Park, uh, the park behind the bank.
Sure, so let's eliminate what street, Public Works does, let's talk about your main responsibility, so.
It'd be the dog park, the community center, the ball field, the pool, and the main.
So, this includes.
And the RV park.
Sure.
And the, and the RV park.
So, this includes mowing, weed whacking, I got it, what about picking up trash?
Uh, like at the, the.
At the area responsibility, you just defined, like, the community center, let's use that for example.
Yeah, we pick up trash there.
Okay, so here's why I'm asking, okay, uh, obviously I go up there quite a bit, and I see, still see a bunch of fireworks stuff laying up there in that gravel, you got a dumpster on the far end near the exit, that's full of firework garbage, another trash, trash laying all over the grass by the bleachers. I got it, maybe it happens during the weekend, but it's been sitting there a while, that's why I'm asking you. I went to the RV park today, and all that grass is burnt, so my question then is, did we factor in when we put this beautiful park in, did we factor in watering that grass at any time when it was first put in? And if not, when did we plan on doing that, because things are starting to erode and all that grass, and now it's all weeds around all the campsites, and its grasses look burnt, and there's people that's been kind of jaw-jacking about it.
Uh, I'll, I'll handle the trash, uh, tomorrow.
We need to get some weed and feed put on those between the, especially where the weeds are really bad, up to cut up, cut the grass, to get some weed and feed.
And that little hill there, I know, I talked to Santiago, I, I called the mayor about getting some spray for ticks, and he did that, but he also mentioned that we can get a mower to mow all that, and this was back in the beginning of June.
We've got a mower that goes on the side of hills, right?
Uh, we just use several tacks of sand as well.
Yeah. But it's better than what he's got, yeah.
Hold on.
Is that the same?
I asked for spraying the dog park a long time ago, and I was told it couldn't be done, why is that? It could be done at the RV park, but not at the dog park, for ticks and fleas.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Who, who did it, who sprayed at the RV park?
Uh, it was a company that was, uh, hired.
Is there a reason why we can't do it at the dog park, I mean, that would make it more.
Nobody ever asked me.
Oh, yes.
They got a hold of me.
Well, I brought it up in a meeting.
I thought I read it.
Yeah.
We can get them, okay. Okay, moving on. Celia?
I got it.
You got it, Charles?
Charles.
Did you get that on your notes?
I know, uh, you got a lot on your plate, and I brought it to you before, and I'm not the smart guy on how this job, uh, so, help me out with every lady's can. The, your pool, the teenagers you hire for the help at the pool, can they, is there something wrong with them helping out with the police call and all those stuff you've got on the plate?
Uh, yeah, uh, so, I mean, we're still doing, uh, uh, private parties, we're still doing swim lessons, but as far as the records go, uh, I have, just the other day, uh, we had them come out and they spread, they did all the mulch at Platter Park, they knocked that out. So, I'm still having to do odd jobs, try to keep them game.
That's why I said, I said you got a lot on your plate, and I say maybe since they're idle now, they could help you out with some of the other things.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I, I try to keep them gainfully employed just with those odd jobs, uh, but there's, it was so.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out, like I said, I'm not smart, so I told Dana to jump in if I'm saying something out of line here.
No, I, I've had, uh, there's been several times that I've called them in to help out.
Keep doing it, okay.
You can only do.
Can I, Celia? Well, can't hear you.
I'm here.
Third time's charm.
Yeah, uh, we're wrapping up T-ball and baseball at the moment, just trying to get a few of those make-up games to complete the season. We're in flag football season, our first games are this Thursday, uh, soccer sign-ups are currently going on, this weekend is the last, Saturday's the last day for soccer sign-ups. And in the last week, we typically get about a hundred sign-ups, and I think today we got about twenty-five, so our numbers are looking right on point for what they normally are. Um, along with soccer, we got a couple large sponsors in the last couple of months, so I'm gonna try and replace all of our soccer balls, if not replace them, add two, then with a bunch of, a bunch of new ones. And on the donation lines between the community, things we did around soccer season, asking just for straight-up donations, and a major donation from Ken Taylor's father, Dale Taylor, who was the child who passed away during soccer season, we were able to raise enough money to buy a memorial bench and a plaque to go in the park and two eighties, so that was able to cover the.
It's going away too, man.
I'm sorry?
It's going away too.
Yes, the parents last week, I walked with them in the park and they picked a spot over by the basketball courts, because he also loved basketball, they can't put it down where the kids play soccer, because it's a flag plane. Um, and one last thing, I have accepted a teaching position at East Elementary, so.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you, uh, next week will be my last week, and I'm hoping to move up one of the assistant directors, they're both still thinking about it, and otherwise.
You have an assistant now?
There's two assistant directors, okay, yeah, they're both part-time, and they're thinking about moving up, whether they're doing it, I don't know, otherwise. Another sports position is open.
What is soccer?
Uh, soccer sign-up season has been going on since June fourth and will end this Saturday.
Along with flag football?
Flag football has been done for a while, we're like in the season, they've already been practicing for about a month, and our first game is Thursday.
So, they can sign up just for soccer, then?
Yeah, just soccer at the.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, work's done, Tice. Well, uh, we've got a couple of things, uh, on the Alpine House, uh, we have appointed a receiver, uh, boasted bond for the receiver, uh, I filed today for the receiver to take possession of the court, Susan, uh, of the court, of, of the, uh, location, and then once he gets appointed to do that, the quarter authorizes that, then we will, he can arrange to borrow money on the land, take down the remaining buildings, and sell the land. We're fortunate that this land is paid off with no deed of trust and no note behind it. We have two other sites I'm gonna have to do, which is the Cozy Arts Theater building and the Oakwood Trailer Park. The Oakwood Trailer Park is currently got a water leak over there and it's terrible shape. Problem with the Oakwood Trailer Park is there is a deed of trust and a note on that with Bank of Missouri. Uh, I'm going to do a notice out in the next couple of days and hope that Bank of Missouri will put enough pressure on the borrowers to effectuate some kind of resolution so we don't have to go after it. Uh, behind the Cozy Arts Theater is a dump, uh, which is a trash dump. I had Jeremy go take pictures and look at it, he did not think that there's anything in there that's, would be classified as something that would contaminate the area. But we may want to do a phase one on that one before we take possession of it, just in case. So, that's on the top of my list. I'm going to have to renegotiate a course with the folks that have Black Oak, and we've talked about that. We have a situation we need to deal with, is that the current ordinance code has not been updated and codified for years. We need to get that to the code people, we're not doing it, so I don't know how you want to do that, but our code.
We're working on it.
All of the ordinances need to go to the code people and be codified. And, uh, on the ninth of next month, it is my intent to, uh, bring in ordinance for Judge Hudson to act it. We're gonna skip the first court date, obviously, so, because that would be before the ninth. And that way I'll get a new ordinance for Judge Hudson, uh, on our second, and then he can go forward after that. I have a couple of items for close, but that's all I have for this. There's the Oakwood Trailer Park, is that the one that's? That's the one behind you. Okay. Anita?
We have, still have those fifty to seventy-five school desk in the back, we've called all the little schools and all the schools period, and nobody wants them. If anybody knows of anybody that needs school desk, student desk, let me know, please.
Yeah, Ricky needs one.
I bet, yes, sir.
We've been trying for three years.
We resubmitted our electric car grant, today I got a call from them asking me some questions, so that's a good sign if they're looking at your application, so we'll see what happens with that. Been working on the, um, twenty-twenty-three audit KPM, the narratives like our economic, what we see for the future, well, we're in, uh, July, so it was easy to see what the future was supposed to be, to be for, so I've been working on that. Transfer station collections, uh, there's a grant that came out, uh, Route sixty-six grant, and we're gonna submit an application for a selfie display. It says, it'll say St. Robert and then Route sixty-six, and the sixty-six, you can sit in to have your picture taken or something, so. And, uh, I've got to talk to the mayor about where we could have, uh, over in the Neon Park area, or across the road over there, wherever the mayor says, but there's no match on that, so we're gonna start on that, uh, sometime this week. All the banners are gone off of St. Robert Boulevard and most of them on Missouri Avenue, we received the new banners for St. Robert Boulevard, and, uh, the electric department told me they'd start on those, the ones for Missouri Avenue, we can't get the brackets anymore, Zane Williams, the banner company went out of business, so we got to look for new banners, so Jeff is gonna work on that. We have attended, I couldn't tell you how many Tyler Tech software, uh, meetings for our new software, learning the new programs, switching over. Neon Park storyboards, Walter and Linda, if y'all could get that to me, uh, the sign company said they're two months behind, and they're, they clasp onto the pole, they don't slide on, so we have time, so, uh, I need those storyboards back. The CBBG closeout, uh, our part for the closeout that hadn't been done was the ordinance as we pass tonight, so we'll get those submitted. CoUSA had a meeting, we've been working on the reimbursement of expenses on the TAP grant where we paid, and then we get reimbursed, and we're trying to get caught up on that. MPUA sent their new, uh, representative for our area over today, David Klesmeyer, he said he'll be stopping in to visit with us from time to time, so that'll be something we haven't had, uh, in the past, that'll be good for us. Also, today we worked from ten o'clock until almost one on the MUR grant, interviewing the companies, um, that have been scored before, these were, uh, Zoom meeting interviews where you actually talked to them.
Are they actually airing something?
Yes, sir.
Where they get the money to pay?
The grant. Yeah.
We don't have the land or location or?
No, this is on the MIR grant. The Fortwood Study on like, you know, like weather conditions or, or utilities on post, how we can mitigate that, where they could get the money. Vern Wannberger, Fremaldies, I've been working with him on the sales tax quarterly. He got his first one and they're excited and ready to get those payments started. August the tenth is the chimney dinner at the community center. We usually buy tickets, so y'all need to let me know who wants to go or how many you want.
August tenth?
August the tenth. Who's the guest?
This superintendent.
Superintendent of the school?
You Hillary Bells. Five o'clock.
Oh, no, Anita.
Five o'clock.
You, Linda.
And where is it?
Glenn. Community center. I'll send you a flyer if you want to go.
Yes, please.
Okay, how many, Glenn?
Just one.
Okay. Linda, one?
Yeah.
I'm already paid a ticket, so I'm good. I'll be there.
Okay.
I've already bought a ticket.
Two. Walter? Michael? No.
Two for me.
Two. Also, mayor was notified that on July the third, Don Scott passed away. He was the mayor of St. Robert in nineteen seventy-eight and then he was mayor from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-seven. So we posted it on Facebook. Mark's got the black ribbon on his picture and we have a resolution we'll send to the family. And they were gonna have a ceremony later, visitation later. So, and then the rest I have is for close, mayor.
Any idea? Susan wanted to go to it. Susan want a ticket? To the chimney dinner?
You want to go?
Susan want a ticket, Susan.
To the.
Chimney ticket.
Just one. August tenth.
August tenth, I'm sorry. At the community center. Unless my thoughts go.
Susan want August tenth, she wants to. Just one.
I have one more question before we go into close. I was behind Santiago in the four wheeler the other day and he was driving on the road. It's not licensed. Can he drive that on the road?
As long as I get pulled over, I guess.
Who pays the ticket if he gets pulled over?
Now, we run our UTV.
Huh?
We run our, like, works UTV.
There's people running all over the city.
We have that triangle on. Of course, we do have a light on top of it, too. As we run around the county. Probably double check what's, what's E, but.
I know we have a triangle and we also have a safety layer as well.
Okay, the next board of all of them meeting will be August sixth. I thought it was August ninth.
It's the sixth.
August sixth, okay. Fine, the, the meeting's being closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter six, ten dash OT one, which includes section one legal, section two real estate, section three personnel of motion. Michael makes a motion, James second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Linda? Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.